I think so.
You have your, you have the perfect outfit for the five major events.
Yeah.
We're starting all the, no, we just start. You're thinking like, no, let's think, what are, are you ready?
Uh, I haven't even thought about it.
Oh, it's like Western.
And Western. Oh, we're not.
I have no town waiting thing.
I have.
Buy a whole outfit.
Let's do it. Okay, Sarah.
Are we live? Yeah.
Y'all ready? So first of all, we just, obviously, the first place of nation evolve. The potential next year's budget. We can put a lot of time into this. It's not going to be where we want it to be. Leading into this workshop, but it's an opportunity for you to see our first stab at some things. And we're going to try to walk through this and answer any of your questions. I mean, first and foremost, are your budget priorities on the first page? You'll see without a doubt, you know, our three primary priorities are to recruit teachers and staff, but then to also retain our teachers and staff and then support student achievement. And we think that the first two obviously support the third component as well. Also, I want to kind of share with you, we had our first recruiting and retention task force meeting last Thursday. Lasted about an hour and a half. We'll talk about that in the board meeting tonight. Some of the stuff you're going to see in the budget will be captured in those recommendations. But again, this is all trying, trying to sequence this together. All right. Question on that. Hey.
And before we jump into this year 25 numbers, we just wanted to provide a little bit of foundational information. So this slide is going to show comparison of this year. So FY 24 salary schedule compared to our neighbors and to another like sized district. Looking at the table, it's going to show maximum steps on each scale. You can see that they're different district by district. We're at a maximum of 28 steps on our scale right now, and there are some districts that go out as far as 28.
Always 28 when I was teaching.
And then it shows each educational level, bachelor's, et cetera, up to doctorate. And it shows our starting salary for each of those schedules and then step 28 since each schedule. With the exception of Uphert has a step 28, we compare it step 28. So you can see there's a lot of differences between them, which makes it kind of hard to do an apples to apples comparison, district to district. Just as one example, if you look at Lexington one, their starting bachelor salary is slightly above ours. But when you get to step 28, they're actually below ours. So their incremental steps are smaller. So it's, it's not really an apples to apples comparison, but it does give an idea of how we currently compare to other districts. Then the next slide, again, is just some history. So this shows the history of DD2 bachelor's degree entry levels, starting salaries from FY 2018 to what we're projecting for FY 25. Starting salary, 48,000 for this year 25. I can see the impacts of that later on in the presentation. But as you see in the table, that is over a 10% increase from the FY 24 starting salary. And if you look at since FY 18, starting teacher salary has gone up almost $12,000 and over 33% in that time period. Not where we want to be, but we are making some things. So this next slide is production of the revenue that is projected to be increased in additional funds for our FY 20 budget as compared to my FY 24. So the very first line is our local funding, which comes from property taxes, which is an increase that's due to assessment growth. It's not for a mileage increase. This is because the property values have increased times our current mileage rate. So the projected number that we received from the county auditor is $8 million, that's without a tax increase.
And just to be clear on what property taxes were following. Yeah, because it's very confusing when you look at our property tax bills and you see property tax for schools. But then below you see a credit for that. So this is for our businesses. It's for our second own 6% home, so second homes. It's for vehicles.
Yes.
Vehicles. You see that on your vehicle property taxes, but it's not for a primary resident in a school district or in her state for that.
We know what the 2024 year was.
The number. Yeah, I have that on a sheet. I'll have.
How much we've collected.
What, what property tax was, yeah, we got through 2024. Because.
Yeah.
No, it's an 8 million increase.
Right. It's an $8 million increase. So that's not so much. 54, 64.
I, I have a sheet. I can pull that.
It's an additional. This is the additional. It's around the $60 million.
The local funding right there. You know, people don't always read as closely as they should. And so you may have to kind of remind them repeatedly what kind of taxes we're talking about so that they don't confuse it with what we're trying to do.
Right. I know Ashley and I had, I felt like this was a really good meeting with the auditor here last weekend. You know, he even acknowledged that where that's located on your bill also probably doesn't help. You know, one, why is it on there? It's to demonstrate, you know, that you are getting the credit for it, but the credit should be right underneath the tax. I don't know. And I don't, didn't, did you get a feeling on whether we had any ability to, to fix that? Or is that a state level?
It's not a state. It's not. The other districts have it right underneath and you can see it.
So whoever generates the bill, maybe that's something to ask about then in the future.
That's a good point. I can't count many years that I've looked at our tax bill and didn't even notice until I'm now more familiar and I'm looking for it, you know, so that's a good point, really.
The next line item is for our state funding from state of private education. So in the governor's bill, he proposed for school districts to receive funding under the state aid classrooms and it's based on a formula that had, is still pretty new. It's only a couple of years old, which hadn't been adjusted in 20, 30 years before that. So now the formula is based on your weighted pupil units in your district as a percentage of the weighted pupil units of the entire state times the teachers that are needed to teach your students. Which right now the formula is at 11.2 and then with a teacher's salary, the average teacher salary used in the formula is a master's plus 12 years. So for that whole big formula, what they have said for school district two is an increase of $7.6 million. And that is specifically supposed to go towards helping us to, to increase teacher salaries, which we'll talk about on the next item. State funding for tier three, that is the portion that comes from the state. That was to make school districts whole. When Act 388 came into play, as Dr. Roberts was just talking about, how you don't pay on your property tax bill for homeowners. So the Act 388 was to take place of that, that penny sales tax. Unfortunately, it never has made us whole and we're severely behind where we would have been if we would have had.
That number, like would it, would have been?
It would have been in excess of $180 million. So it's the 2 million.
No, I'm talking about like currently, just for a, like for that year, like what would it have been? And what are they giving us?
That's good.
And like, if we should have gotten like 5 million or 2 million or whatever. I'm just curious.
We do have a table where we capture all, where we've been keeping track of that ever since it was stated and that. Good point. The additional available due to technology moving back in house, we were outsourced. We had one, one quarter that we paid for in FY 24 that we will not have in FY 25. So that's capturing that savings right there. So the total funds available at this time, if we're aware of this, $19 million to go towards our budget request that we're going to talk through. The, the one section that we're working on right now is for favorable salary exchange. So for the past couple of years, we have had teachers retire, staff members retire who've been with the district for a long time. And in their place have been folks with, who, who don't have as many years on the salary scale as those who retired. So there's favorable exchange captured there. So we're working on determining the value of that.
Part of the favorable exchange calculation allows us, so we know that we, we are going to allocate from 100% of our teachers that we want to hire. But we don't, we're not able to always hire 100% of our teachers. So what we do is we fill in spots with the teachers we have. We have long-term subs. We have teachers that forego their prep periods. What I've asked the finance team to do is to use this category in favorable exchange as a way to compensate. Right now, we're just compensating kind of what I would say flying in the dark a little bit. But that's the line item that compensate because we've already allocated for that anyway. And it's not being filled on top of the fact that we have right now, I think I talked to Scott Matthews, 158 vacancies. He's filled 133 of them. Feel really good about filling 100% of our vacancies. But of the 158, not all of those teachers were retiring at master's level. You know, top of the scale, 20 years experience and being replaced by somebody who's bachelor's level. But a lot of them are, matter of fact, majority of them are. And so that favorable exchange is something we need to calculate in our formula when we're looking at balancing our budget.
You know, the past few years, that's Dr. Roberts was saying that we've been filling in for some of the teachers. And we've been able to utilize our S R dollars for that. So when a teacher picks up an extra class, we've been able to use S R money. So that savings has been included in our fund that we capture that in our fund balance. So.
Wow. Yeah.
So the next slide, we're going into the budget request. We, as I said earlier, we've had many meetings with building administrators, with department directors, district leadership, and these were the requests that we have perceived in our bringing to y'all. It's been vetted through and there have been other requests that haven't made it through and these were top, top priority.
Give you an idea. I'll give them the sticker shock y'all gave me. Because we met with the building levels and departments and, you know, there's a dollar amount associated with all of that. And the original, help me out, Mr. Doherty, was it 44 million?
What, the original of this?
Original.
It's like 29 million per request.
Is that actually you, you have peeled off some of our gun? Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so we started shooting for the moon and then we start working our way down on what is the most essential thing for us. And again, it's peak, right? It's 80 plus percent of our general fund goes into salaries and benefits for teachers and classified staff and administrators overall. So that's, that was the rationale when it got to the cabinet level on things that we started eliminating extra positions and trying to make sure that we are increasing salaries and to the maximum extent possible.
As we were talking about earlier, some of the money for the state aid classrooms to go specifically for the teacher salary scale. So the state level mandate for the $3,500 increase to all cells of the teacher salary scale is what is currently being required from the House Way of Needs is the $47,000 starting salary. That's that second line item there. Sorry, missed the first one. So that's $8.1 million. So the teacher step is also a mandate where every teacher, as they progress through, after one year, they move up on steps. So that would be 1.0, 1.9 million dollars. On the next mandate that we have is for health insurance increase. 11.8% is the increase for employer portion. So the employees will not see an increase, but this is for the employer. Unfortunately, that costs $2.4 million for us. So we started with the $19 million and we're kind of going down with, with so far for the mandates. The next category is our additional salary related. We don't like to be at the very minimum state salary schedule. So we'd like to increase $1,000, which is where we are currently, we're $1,000 above the minimum. And if $3,500 increase that's mandated, we want to go another thousand above. So the starting salary would be 48,000.
Which just puts us at SaaS quo where we are today in terms of minimum salary schedule. It just keeps us at at least $1,000 a step above.
And every district will be going up at least 3,500 to get, well, they'll be going up to the 47,000. So where they were, they could be going up 4,500 just to get to the minimum. The next, next item is to extend the teacher step to 30. So that some of our neighbors have up to 40, but we were going to extend up to 30. Next line item is an admin salary schedule review. This is to make us consistent with some of our other scales. Previously, it was tied with the teacher salary scale, but really haven't been followed the teacher scale for admin level positions or principals. So this is to, to correct. The next line item is a revised ECA schedule for all of our extracurricular activities. So this would be for academic coaches as well as for sporting coaches.
So the one thing I asked for the ECA salary schedule, again, this comes back to years of bargaining contracts. A lot of times when you raise salary schedules, you, if you don't have the ECA salary schedule tied to that, you forget about it. And you go five, six, seven, eight, 10 years and you still have, which in some cases we've done here with our ECA salary schedule. So what you do is you index it off of a first year teacher salary so that each year or each time you raise the first year teacher salary, it will proportionally raise the ECA stipend as well. And, and we can calculate what the cost of the ECA stipend schedule is along with our salary step increases as well. But it keeps it proportionate moving along with everything else salary wise in our.
Y'all have copied that so we can look at it. To the agreement. Okay. I'd like to see that.
Okay. So you're saying you're setting it up now so that it will increase.
Moving forward.
Right. Okay.
Yep. We set the indexes based off of what a first year teacher makes. And then each time you increase that, it will increase your ECA salary schedule too.
And then, and with that, is there like a comprehensive list of all the?
Yeah, every, every coaches, club sponsors.
Email that to us, please.
And I've heard from some of the teachers that though that are doing those extracurriculars. So that would be beneficial to them because they say they've never had anything in writing that shows.
Yeah, we started working on this almost a year ago, trying to, it's just, it's taking a, it's a lot. If you can imagine all the different spots we have and then calculating the, the indexes. But moving forward, then it'll be a part of our agreements.
And then can we go back to, I'm sorry, to the admin one? Can you explain that one more time? So basically, what does that mean?
So right now, our admin salary scale was based on, it was an old setup. It was based on the teacher salary scale. But then there were a few years when we froze admin, that we raised the teachers. Trying to save money, make sure teachers got their base. So we made an adjustment and we were trying to bring in. We never really caught them back up to where the teacher salary scale was. So this also goes along the lines of in the salary study where principals for a high school will be on this scale and principals for middle, middle school will be on this scale. So they'll all have a different scale that we set up, whereas before we were trying to calculate it on teacher scale.
How does our admin pay skills stack up to surrounding districts? Like our, okay, since I think we're going to address, I'm just curious because like if we're still comparable with admin to other districts, or are we far below, like, you know, the principal and Charles?
But this is, how much is this increasing? Is it like a certain percentage? I mean, it's.
It really depends, right? It depends on, so for example, there were, and again, so I'm looking at Gail, because Barbara, you guys have the longest history here. But you had small school, large school, you had high school, but also not captured in the high school was this extra stipend out there. And so we're trying to be very transparent and put all that into the schedule. But also at the same time, that number may not be the number because there may be a little bit of attrition in a couple of these buildings where the salary studies said we were overstaffed. So there may be a couple of these positions that are absorbed in a couple of these high schools across the district. I won't say which ones.
You're saying there's a possibility we decrease the amount of admin and that would help offset some of the increase. So that's what I'm concerned about. I do remember the salary study did state that we were top heavy in that area of the district. And if we're still at, you know, comparable levels with surrounding districts, I'd need to boost up admin. And then that's money again that we could still put into the teacher's salary.
Building level principals are not even close to, of course, and I want to be very.
Like a dual thing, like decreasing some of the amount while.
Absolutely. But I also want to be very clear, and that is, we also know that we are not going to get to Charles. Right? Their funding is different. Their scenario is different than ours. And, and we understand that, but what we do need to do is be able to compete with Berkeley, Uphert, and then up in Richland County, Lexington one, and, you know, so similar size school districts and we are, we're not.
I think what I mean by comparable is like if we're, you know, so many thousand behind our starting teacher salary, are we equivalently behind, like, you know, just as much behind on our admin? Or are admin closer than our teachers are to surrounding?
We get a little step closer to this, we'll show you the comparisons, just like we did with the teachers.
That'd be helpful. So we're not changing the, the formula or the way that we calculate their salaries. We're just adding, we're just increasing, we are changing.
Yeah.
It's not going to be a formula anymore. It's going to be just a scale for each position. So right now, we're using, we have been using a formula based on the teacher's scale.
Yes, yes, yes. I remember I said, so, so that's gone.
That would, that is.
So now it's, it's like a step.
Yeah.
So it's going to just be based on years of experience, like with teachers or in a degree?
It is, yes, it is similar. The only degree offset for building level administrators is a doctorate. Because you have to have the master's degree to be administrator. So that's the only.
And the rest is just based on years' experience.
So the number of students or the capacity, none of that matters?
No, here's why. The offset for that is an extra administrator, you know, so an extra assistant principal. So the bigger your building, then you're going to have, you know, so for example, Summerville High School is going to have more assistant principals than Worcester High School. Because you're trying to keep, just like you do with guidance counselors for the most part, a little bit with nurses. You try to have these ratios, you know, that are similar. So that's what'll offset that. But a high school principal is a high school principal, middle school principal is a middle.
So the high school, middle and elementary, so will they be on different scales based on that? So I was like going to say, the high school principal is probably very different than elementary school principal.
So can you send us that too, please, Tina? I'm sorry if you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay, the bottom two lines on there for, we don't like to give our, you've got our non-teacher folks, so a step for them, which is an average of 2%. And then additional increase would be a 2%, we're proposing a 2% increase for our non-teachers as well.
Is that on top of their regular, like, isn't there an annual increase of like 3% or 2%? So that's, is that it or is that 2% additional? And is there across, like, when you say non-teachers, who's that? Everybody who's not a teacher does an employee?
No cafeteria.
No cafeteria, it's on there.
So we're talking like. Librarians, media, specialist assistant.
Estudial, yeah.
What about bus drivers? Are they?
We have a little, we have a different. Yeah, we have a different schedule for that.
Okay. Would it be possible that you get a, a comprehensive, I'm sorry, a list of like who that, like, yeah, that entails the non-teacher?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no. Absolutely. No, no, that, that's what this is for, 100%.
Just so I can better understand.
And we're having another workshop on the 22nd.
Yeah, this is, this is exactly what this is.
So the, after the mandates and the additional salaries, we have remaining new revenue of $225,000.
No, no, we're still going though.
The next page.
I mean, this is.
Few more budget requests on the next page. So these are academic priorities and we really probably should have put needed due to growth on every single line item of this. Because additional teacher.
These are all building level requirements. Obviously, the sped piece is really kind of mandated by IDEA. The others is our forecasting on what we think are, and y'all know what our trends are. So that's a pretty conservative estimate on what we think we're going to need, but.
Do we know what our counselor like ratios are? Is this going to like help? I know those are really high right now.
Yeah. I mean, it's different.
Are we like bringing on more or just enough to accommodate growth? So we're going to be in the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's.
Just want to make sure they're, we're looking at those ratios and that we're not overburning it on either.
I guess if you had an idea of what the salary exchange would add to this, I guess.
Are you talking about like the money that we're not spending? Like, could we potentially?
Like put a dent in it.
And you could put a dent in this. I can't really say right now.
To your point, and that's exactly was my question. So I've asked Scott Matthews to kind of take a look at what has historically been. And again, this, it's gray. It's, it's a gray shot. You all know that. But how many people have retired? How many people we've hired? What's been the salary differentiation? Should give us a, a generic idea of what the favorable exchange will be to your point. To also to your point, so with the counselor piece, we absorbed, and I want to say it was at $900,000 that we didn't use to have in social workers. So we picked up almost, incurred almost a million dollar debt. And even though that's not counseling, it is.
So in addition, that's on the next page. But they don't help with any of the same.
No, they're different. They are different roles, but it's.
One, like.
So two workers are not doing.
That's a lot of students that they're.
But you're, so you're talking more.
I'm talking about like our counselors that are, you know, work with.
We just, so you're clear, we have guidance counselors at the elementary, at the middle and the high school level. We'll give you the ratios for all three of them.
I don't think I'm quite as concerned with the ratios on the younger levels. I think it's important, but if you're in the middle of high school, you really want to make sure that we're not stretching those departments too thin. And I don't know if there are savings from anything that we could allocate some of that to, I potentially, you know, hire that and bulk up those departments a little bit to make sure that they're able to serve the students.
Everything, I always say, I always say in the bargain contracts, everything comes with a cost.
Yeah.
And so it's whatever way you all decide you want to deal that advantage. It's a cost that we're already upside down on and we're going to go into deficit spending, which, well. Now, and I'm just, I'm going to say this part out, I'm just going to say this part out loud. Yes, you want to be fiscally conservative with your money, meaning we're not a bank. And so the goal that you all set that I worked with you on was 18%. Minimum really for us would be 16.67%. That's two months of cash. But 18% is a comfort level. Really, 19 is even a little better because you have, where you have it flow based on bond payments and some other things. But to get into the twenties and up, then it becomes, all right, can you be investing that money in your staff and your students?
What percent is our, our like three month like operations?
So three, three months would be, is that 24, 25?
Okay.
25%. Yeah, you know, so, yeah, 18, 16.
Like if that was a two month?
16.67 is two months. Yeah, so. Yeah.
It's hard to spend funds on like so on recurring.
Yeah, no, I know.
You just need to look ahead of what, I always told our staff, I'm not bargaining with them, I'm like, listen, if we go into deficit, there's, remember this, 80 plus percent of our general fund is salaries and benefits, which are a peak. And if we go into deficit, then we would have to determine what are we going to cut, you know? It's, it's a little bit of a, a risk, you don't want to go down because you want to affect your bond rating. But I do, and Chad, you, you bargained, sometimes I'm willing to take that risk, you know, especially in a district that's growing, because it, it's probably going to offset itself in the following year. There's not going to be as big of a gap to make up if you don't generate the revenue you need to. To your point of looking at making a investment in an area.
Well, I think you should wait until we got to the next.
Yeah, we're looking good right here, right?
I know, I was like looking at this page like.
This is where our funding.
Yeah, I see it.
So these are still district level priorities, but really they're for, they're for buildings. To maintain our HRAs, they were ESSER funded, and then they were grant funded from the state. So this would be the first year that we want to take care of them in the general fund, because. On the next line item, the same thing, our social workers that were currently being paid from the past couple of years from ESSER, those funds are ending September 30th of 2024. So in order to keep them, we would need to move them to the general fund. Um, other salary study adjustments that were areas of focus for the CISOs and bookkeepers and also RNs. Currently, our RNs are based on like on three different levels, depending on the size of the school that you're in. But if you're an RN, you're an RN, and as Dr. Robb has pointed out, if you have more students in your school, you're going to get another RN, so this is to get down the scale there.
So we can compete in the marketplace. Now, a lot of them, and Amanda's sitting back there, but just been doing this a long time. A lot of them will choose to make less money, because they like the schedule, but that still has to be somewhat competitive in the marketplace, or it'll be very difficult to attract them.
We, we didn't raise their salary last year. We, in nursing area, we did not.
True. We just focused on the, the scope of what other non-teaching staff.
Yeah, they weren't separated.
Yes, I remember we were going to talk about that this year, that was.
Um, the next line item was for the Public Information Office to have a web designer that we brought on board in this February. They're just trying to really work on our. Give us a.
Jason Lee Brand.
What, that was paid out of ESSER?
No.
No, it's an additional. How are we paying now?
It's all the general fund.
So it's. Why is it an additional, I'm sorry.
It's, it's a new title position, so technically, if you look, we had Matt, we had Brian, we had Jennifer. When Matt left, instead of really kind of replacing Matt as a body, we hired a webmaster instead. Same number of bodies in the department.
So why is there an additional?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, additional.
We had Matt, we had Brian, we had Jennifer.
If Jennifer's now.
Now we have Jennifer's, now we have Brian, and now we have Jayce. Right.
And Jen.
No.
If Jennifer's now the new Matt, and Matt's gone, and Brian is Brian.
Yeah.
And now we hired this guy, this would be like the old Jennifer, let's just say.
Absolutely.
How is there an additional, that's a huge amount of money.
Well, just understand that salary.
Well, I mean, yeah, I'm just saying like to just.
But we're saying, why is it an additional?
Right, an additional. And I mean, maybe like if somebody like, maybe Jennifer moving.
It's the same number of bodies. Am I missing something?
I don't know.
How many bodies were in your department? You, Brian, and Matt, correct? Well, we. So now how many people are in your department?
That same number that I think we're looking to add one.
Well, that's not in, that's not this, that's not this.
This, that specifically, web designer, so that would be PIO like.
Three positions, three months.
And are we replacing Jennifer's position?
Right now.
That was my misunderstanding.
Yeah.
I thought we were replacing Jennifer's positions. So we don't take that.
That's a different discussion for, that's an org chart discussion.
Yeah.
You, you want.
Yeah.
That's.
I just was like hearing, that's why I was confused.
That's an org chart discussion, that's not, that could come in a later day, but that's not this.
Cause then that throws off that conversation.
Sure. So that technically is out.
We'll take that.
Yeah.
My misunderstanding, I.
That's not a big deal, that's why we do this.
Okay. And what's the?
Um, the next line item is, we have, we don't have a point person in Personnel Department at this time, or in the benefits portion of Personnel Department. So these are to upgrade one person to be like the lead of all Personnel and in the benefits side. So this would be the salaries and benefits portion.
We should have an extra person.
It's not an extra person. So they're going into like.
Different cabin.
I mean, so then you're.
A director position instead? Would it be a director's fee?
Name a director as an executive director.
Yeah.
Is Brian still with there? Wouldn't it be same?
Scott.
But now in Personnel.
No, I was looking back at it.
It would, it would move somebody, so you know, we had an executive director. It would be to elevate one of those people into that point person, person that's an executive.
So did we save money when she left, and now we have two non-directors?
But that would be an org chart change as well, right?
Exactly.
So we'd have to discuss that before that is added.
But Scott would be the executive.
Well, we don't know, I mean, because we'd have to, that would be like a whole.
He's in charge of it right now.
There's two people.
There's two people.
I know, he's.
They'd have to really drive those, right? We'd have, we'd have to vote.
You'd have to take, just like this thing we were just talking about, you'd have to vote on.
We'd have to vote to create a director position, or at least, or, or executive director position.
And Kenneth and Chad and I are pretty close to have the org chart for you guys.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, can we get an updated copy of that?
Well, it's not changed yet, I mean, the recommendation.
I'm just curious like where it's, it's been a while.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And I know we've hired, like a full, like, like one with like even like our technology department kind of like more comprehensive possible.
I'm a little confused that the Personnel Department, we need an executive director?
With that personnel, we have three directors, so there's not really like one person who's acting as like the executive director, it would be the point person.
There's three, behind two in the other department?
Kenneth, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so Personnel is, is now one complete person. There was originally an executive director, and we had the directors as well.
How many directors did you have under the executive director? Okay, so now we're at three directors and no executive.
That's correct.
So we are looking to go to an executive, two directors possibly, or still have three?
Correct.
But one, three or two directors?
Two, yeah, I think.
But we're not changing, we still have three.
Same number of people, just one person would be elevated within the department to the executive director positions.
Was that not, and I may be totally wrong, but was that not, when that occurred, and we had that savings, did we not at that point use that savings to then add another person in another department to, to the org chart?
I thought it was to add another person in that department to cover subs and that sort of thing.
There was, there was, and, and I'm, I'm going to have to think about it, because there was something that we used that salary to, to cover.
We had an additional position last year in that department.
Personnel Department for subs. That was, that was when we decided to maintain our in-house sub program. Right, yeah.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, because we're, we're going to outsource and then cost the outsourced, but it's like. Yeah, but like I don't think it was that savings was going to that, the savings of not outsourcing.
That's what it was.
Was what we utilized for that position, because we would have spent. You know what I mean? What the money we would have spent to outsource was the money that we used to keep it in-house, which was cheaper than outsourcing. But I, I do feel like there's still, we do have to be careful that if we absorbed a position or traded off, like, pulled from something, we, you know, we're not.
That's what I would be curious.
Double stymied.
Is, is if when we, when we did away with that position, what we then transferred those funds to?
I had to sit and think about it for a second. It was Tyrone's position. Cause I added that when I got here, and that was the.
That's funny.
Yeah, that was the.
Where's the, is the health person still exist, that position? Think of that, never.
But what was, I mean, when we were going through that whole scenario, what was, what was the, well, I know why we did it, because Elena was leaving. But did we just not have, or did not think there was a need for having that?
We replaced Elena, Donna.
Right, for just a part-time.
About six months, maybe.
Right.
And then Donna left. Then, so we had already added that position, but when Donna left, then that's when we just kind of absorbed it, and Kenneth took over Personnel, and we just kept trucking, you know, with the people we had.
Elevated Personnel, what was the other department?
Benefits. Speaking this out loud is trying to help me remember, you know, what exactly we did. I know when I first got here, that's, that was the position.
Can you, can you explain to us kind of the reason, the advantage to having a, an executive director position?
Just a point person up in the department. So Kenneth has kind of been doing that right now, but Kenneth is also responsible for all. So it's just advantageous to have, and they work well together, but it's still advantageous to have that person. So honestly, we do have somebody that serves in that capacity, just not being paid for it, so comes to the cabinet. Comes to the cabinet meeting.
But not being.
Comes to the cabinet meeting every Monday, and does all those things as the point person, but just not the point person. So if you have a departmental issue, it's just beneficial to have somebody who is the person. Um, we have that in academics with our Chief Academic Office, we have it in Operations. Um, we have it, you know, in Finance, so just everywhere, that's the only place that we don't have it right. We have it in Technology. Um, that's, and HR is, you know, one of our biggest drivers, you know, with everything we're talking about, so. And we felt like it was a small expense, considering the dividends it conveyed with our recruiting efforts, retention efforts, so.
I just needed clarity, because, you know, during my listening session, top heavy, and we had that discussion before, and so.
Well, we're not adding anybody. We're not adding anybody.
No, that is true, but you did bring a question in my brain in here. Remember, we talked about the librarians not having.
I was just about to say that.
Do we have them here?
Yeah, that's.
Uh, no, because again, in talking, and talking to several of you all, you all didn't feel like that a, I'm not saying everybody, but there's seven of you, didn't feel like a point, a, a single media specialist person was justified as a position. So our challenge has been, what are we going to do and who are we going to identify to be responsible for that? But a librarian at the district office was not.
I don't think a new district position would justify that, but having a liaison, somebody from the district to conserve in that capacity, who's maybe in a director role, who can take on extra duty of being that.
Absolutely.
And I think initially, that's what they wanted, someone that they can go directly to.
Yeah, they go for. Yeah, we're just not adding them.
But I think we, we need to.
So it'd be.
Additional work, when you have a school plus that extra, of course, we're going to compensate them in some form of budget.
Right.
Well, it might just be a district employee that they, right?
Yeah, um, so right now we have a, we have, talking to the academic team, we have a middle school lead, or secondary lead, and elementary lead already. But we need somebody from this office that is your district office contact. Because if Ashley is my elementary lead, but she is at Austin Bailey Elementary School, really hard for her to be the lead and be the media specialist at the school, so it needs to be. So we're trying to decide who on our academic team is the person we identify for the lead and not, and not add a position. That's.
If they have someone.
Yeah.
I'm not kidding. Uh, the only problem that I have, the only problem that I, and it's, I think it's just because I need to think about it a little bit more, but is the fact that last year this time, we said we didn't, we didn't have that need, so we didn't fill that position, so that we could add a position. Now we've added that, that position, and a year later, we're coming back and saying, no, we need to keep that added position, but we need to now, now up somebody up to the level that we just kind of did away with. So it's an additional expense, is what I'm saying, is that I, I need to sort through that, because I don't want to be. I don't, well, I don't want to.
We have kind of the head of person, like a executive director personnel kind of absorbed it, right? You're saying, put that savings into a new district athletic director position. And now we're going back and saying we need a new executive.
And I don't want to get it, us to get into the habit of this year, we approved to abolish a position or do away with a position, so that we can create a new position, and then next year we come back and say, okay, well, now we need that position back, so now we've got double the expense. You know?
I think it'd be really beneficial for us to sit down and look at the org chart and just like really kind of go through what we have, where we have it to in, in generals.
Your chart's online, you all have access to, we haven't modified the org chart. These are, you know, the looks, that what we would do, again, it's not adding.
I can see why it's would need to be a point person in.
I can see too.
I can see that, I'm really good. But it's just, it's just that, it's kind of, it's kind of behind the eight ball. You know, it's, it's after we've done this, now, okay, now we need this now, we've decided we can't do without this, so now we've got both.
Well, devil's advocate, I do like, they're looking, well, we aren't in a deficit, but we're looking at increased revenues and then in a growing district. So before, when we were in a position where we had less students, less, you know, maybe.
But we're still not up to par with our teacher salary and our.
And so, yeah, it's like.
So as long as we, to me, as long as we have still not made it to that point, and then we're still in a deficit.
Exactly.
So I mean, that's just, that's just my way of thinking, but.
No, I agree. I was just trying to.
I know, I know.
I don't think we're going to finish those people.
Oh, no, I mean, this is just your, and this is for you all, so we can ask questions. Yeah, this.
Sorry, that's.
The next one's pretty easy anyway, and then this is.
The next.
Yeah. These are all big calls.
Building maintenance, fire cost, re-increase energy costs, property insurance, solid waste fees and taxes, third-party inspection, increased customer repairs and maintenance, these are all due to our buildings that are aging. Just cost of everything is, is rising. We're moving to the RAPR visitor management system, we're replacing, instead of identikit, we had talked about this a couple of weeks ago. We've saved this cost for buses and increased fuel. Yeah, the monthly fee now to Verizon for school, plus tablets, that was a state initiative to get those tablets. Then we have some additional software licensing.
I have a question through this page, but additional technology, if you, um, you mean never let additional, when you spell advisor, does that still keep us like cheaper than when we're outsourcing technology? We have like a comparison of what we're paying the anti versus where we'll be if we add 222,000. Just want to make sure like we're still benefiting. In these terms.
And I just have to be able to 600,000.
Okay.
But, but I also have a question about that too, like how many, are we now going to have one per the school?
So that gives us, um, three more, and I think what you really need to do is set, watch the difference in workload, because we now have our refresh coming. So the workload with the Chromebooks is a lot different with the, uh, those devices. So now all of our students will be on the same platform.
Less work.
Less, yes, yes, in, in terms of maintenance and repair stuff, um, and plus more people. So, but we need the more people, we've got more students. So, but we need the more people, we've got more students too. So it does help. Um, and I do think that our tech cadet program will start to gain some speed. Those kids will be placed at our elementary schools, which is. At the middle of high schools. Right now, the challenge has been, and this was just kind of our first stab at it, was those middle and elementary schools, problem is it's two different devices. So therefore they're on two different management systems and it causes challenges. Now our entire student body will be on the same console.
You know how we have that off period in high school where they can do like help in the office or whatever? Do the tech cadets get utilized like that as a credit?
Um, so that's part of it, to have it formalized. So it's an internship program.
That'd be cool if you're taking a class, but then also helping.
So in.
What about the, on the next page, I, I know you went through all that. What about the software licensing process, parent square? Is that, is that the new, um, the new communication? And those platforms?
Brought everything in the one class.
Where all of it's like, kind of kept a record of, if they, that they. Instead of like dojo and love.
I know that sounds like a lot, you know, it's twenty-seven thousand.
Interesting. That five hundred is not just for that.
It says like that also licensing.
Let me play.
Yeah, we can go through the next couple really quickly because it's just some more historical information. Mostly about our millage, which hasn't changed in the last several years. So that's easy to talk about that history. Um, the first slide shows an illustration of what we're allowed village wise. Um, again, you can see the middle column that says village living. We're not projecting to change it for twenty twenty-five. We're just telling what we would be allowed if we could.
Well, we can, what we can change, uh, what we are allowed to increase our millage by is C P I, so we can supervise the nets as well as the population factor for our district. So this would be the mill, mills that we would be allowed because of the.
We found that without a.
No, they can, they still have.
I was confused. The next one is the grand, graphical illustration of that history. See, it's flat. And.
Clear.
We flat. The last slide about millage and revenue is just a illustration of, um, how our millages, how our revenue is generated locally. Um, basically our property values result in a six percent assessment. Again, this is not on your occupied property. It's not anyone, um, occupying their homes. Um, is that six percent assessment is applied to the property value and that gives us the assessed value. And then that's multiplied by the millage and that gives us the amount of revenue that we generate. Um, and so this is just showing, um, an example of three percent assessment growth year over year. And it's just showing that even without a village increase, we do generate more income every year because of those property values.
That three percent growth we know is very, I mean, certainly very conservative, but as you see, um, there's a number right there that's used, it's the sixty-eight eight. It's how much people are getting from.
Yes.
The last, uh, the last slide that we were going to talk about, which we talked a little bit about is our fund balance. So as a percentage of our expenditures, um, GFOA recommends sixteen point six seven. It's like problems, talk about our board policy, our desires to be the eighteen percent. We have a little bit more than that. Um, again, it's hard to utilize one time savings of dollars on preferring expenditures and start paying somebody the next year, every day, then the next year to pay them. We have a little bit of growth if we don't raise taxes. We have a little bit of growth.
And I think the biggest thing here is, is for you all to know that if you prioritize a certain area, we've got, we got room to, to, I wouldn't say take a chance, but to invest and twelve months to figure out, okay, what's that investment going to do to us long range and adjust, you know, movement forward. So it's not like some districts where that's going to put you down into fiscal watch. This right here demonstrates a very conservative approach to what we're doing. It allows us to make those decisions.
Tina, if, you know, part of that, if we get up to the twenty-seven percent could be utilized for like bonuses and stuff.
Yeah. And I think that's what we looked at was. Yeah, especially the bonus stuff and the longevity stipends, that's best to be paid for out of your cash. It's a one-time expense, but still with that, um, uh. And then, you know, the savings that, you know, and you still can look at that as well. So I want to speak out.
What we're needing essentially is what we're. So we was talking about bonuses or we waiting for, I mean, what's, where are we?
Yeah. If you have that captured.
I know we've all been adhering.
Yeah.
So the bonuses, you can get that at two thousand or new.
New hires and three thousand.
Thousand percent. It was eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Wait, say that again, Tina. Sorry.
I think it was eight hundred and sixty-nine. I was, I'm sorry. I was trying to look for my number. Didn't include it in this one because.
Could we maybe work out something that shows if we were to.
It was eight sixty-nine, two hundred or two thousand, the three thousand signing benefits.
Those are the sign effects.
Yeah, based on what we think our vacancies are going to be.
And then the, the retention, we're still in the.
Yeah. My, my thoughts on the retention is, is to tier it, uh, because if you've been here five years, your retention and you've been here twenty-five years, really shouldn't look the same. Trying to tier it.
Could we maybe get what that cost would be and what that would bring our fund balance down? Maybe the next step. Like, you know, we were going to do like a.
You have to.
Cause I just focused on this, like how much that would bring our fund balance down.
But you can't do that.
Potentially one weekend.
You can't do that. You get contracts.
What's that? Well, yeah, that's why we kind of put it on pause a little bit. We don't know what the total number will be.
But it would if you would have signed contract like we did last year.
The.
The retention.
The retention.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
The next apparently signed contract and made.
We've still been working that out because here's the thing, you know, we do want to be good stewards of, you know, extra dollars. So, you know, typically, like when I've done retention bonuses in other districts, you got it your first pay in the following year. You didn't get it, you know, over the summer or because what happens is we lose those people.
And you get it once you start that school. So you sign a contract name once you start.
The first paycheck in your new contract years.
But if they sign the contract, then they're.
They have to get out.
That's.
But you put like.
Oh, that's, that's more trouble. Get that. Yeah.
Did that happen last year to us? We had teachers who signed the contract and got the bonus leave. Not many.
I'm proud of that. We'd have to ask.
I, yeah, I would like to know. I mean, because preferably I'd rather give them the bonus now if we can. I mean, they've, you know.
But if it's a retention bonus.
When they sign the contract, not today.
Yeah.
We did that last year.
I know, but that's what he's saying though. You can.
That's what I'm asking.
We're still just.
That's fine. I.
Yeah, we, we haven't gotten to.
Not fair.
Yeah.
A few.
Here's something is, you know, you've heard the old saying is the, is the juice worth, worth the squeeze. If it was only a few people, it's a few people and it's.
That's what I'm asking. Let's look at the.
Yeah, we just don't have that.
Sure. I think that's fair. Yeah.
We're still.
Contracts would do that anyway.
Work as fast as we can. You know, give them everything we can. You saw that our work already eight million dollars in the debt that we've looked.
You, wait, we need to ensure, but I have to use. Facility of. I'm just saying. I have more than one back.